Forum, and I don't see a part here, so we're just gonna go with things. Public comment, it appears as though we do not have any public comment. And so I would move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that any of the commissioners would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Which includes the minutes of our last meeting, the financial reports in the staff room. If not, I take and entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as.
So.
Thank you, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same thing. Great, we are on to the consideration of the adoption of the resolution for the Go Safe Action Plan.
Thank you. I feel like you're also familiar with this project, so I don't need to, like. We demand to be able to give you the background, as we call, this is very funded project. And we have local partners working together with our financial contributions. Sales was helpful, we had a project steering committee, public engagement. To the point that we are now have a resolution for for you to consider adoption of the plan with appendix. Or in all, with the goal of bringing traffic death and serious injuries to zero by 2035, that's our goal. The goal of the plan. If the plan is adopted, then there will be a task force to be formed with local partners usually. And then with updated information and data and things like that. So some local municipal approval of this plan. And with the appendix and with the western portion, we think such. Any questions?
Questions for Ray in terms of the resolution? Any further discussion?
Will there be discussion after the motion?
Yeah, there will, yeah, identity, for discussion now.
Sure, okay.
Okay.
So, sorry if I'm late to the game, but until I had the appendix last week, it's kind of sort of. And then resolve this here.
Sure.
I have a lot of concerns on this. There's been some good things identified, mainly the the accident death review. That is just, that's a no brainer. That needs to be that reestablished. I mean, in the medical field anywhere they do that, that's focusing on specific incidents with specific solutions, if possible, is what we need to do. There are a lot of implied costs incurred on a lot of these things. And so I wonder who's gonna pay for these projects? Who's gonna find the best staff time to develop them?
Part of the, part of the task force could be formed, which primarily initially with our local government partners. In terms of funding, one of the things as part of implementation, we keep looking for funding opportunities, like what we have done. Back in 2021 or after 2021, when the initial plan was adopted, we look out for opportunities. You know, to fund those endeavors and suggestions and accommodations. As we know, funding is always is is a challenge, especially this day and age, as you write in the news. The shifting, some of the priorities of administration and the way even transportation. Vies or design. So we'll keep looking for funding opportunities. So in terms of we deciding streets or new roads, it's a collaborative effort. So we will be working, the staff and staff, we will be working with our local partners. Because they, city, county, the town and other villages, and they have public work staff. They have engineering staff, and we all work together. So, yeah, there are certain things that require a lot more money. There are certain things that require a little less money, such as some of the public. Publicity, you know, you're trying to promote the safety message. We definitely would do that, and that's what we have been doing. So, yeah, there's different ways, we are changing behavior. There's also publicity for how people try. So there's different ways, but if if in terms of the infrastructure changes, yeah, that's.
And I'm not so much looking at that. What I'm looking at is the burdens that this puts on staff to develop all these programs, existing staff.
Yeah.
You've got committees, you've got projects, you've got safety toolkits. All this stuff takes time and staff.
Yeah.
Is there anybody that has a lot of extra time and staff right now?
Transportation.
I think you do.
No, I know I don't say enough already. It's. Transportation planning is a core business for us in remote. I thought we'd do the best, and again, it's a collaborative effort. As you pointed out, we only have so much capacity to do what we have to do. But we rely on partners a lot, you really, seriously, we do, like, I mean, well, two districts. We can go to ISU, Highlands, let's stay firm, for example. There are other, there are other partners out there that we can work with. And we do our best, we appreciate your recognition of our capacity and time and everything. We just have to work smarter, I guess, in more efficient ways. Little bit would help in terms of our staff time. So, yes, a lot of work, definitely, but it doesn't mean that it has to be done overnight, so we have to prioritize.
And then my real concern is number eight, the pursue safe vehicle fleet policies. Where that is a mandate to add these, this equipment to these new, this new equipment. As a, as a former road commissioner, I can tell you, this severely complicates the bidding processes, adds a lot of cost. Nowhere in this report did I see that that this has been identified as a problem. So, we're, when prevailing wage, the evolution of those restrictions, I lived through that. And I can tell you, there's a huge cost that is put on local entities to, you know, comply with all these regulations. And this is, I think, just a solution in search of a problem. The, the report cited Cambridge, Maryland, I guess it was, as, as an example, as somebody who's done that. What, what, what value is that to justify something like this? Talking with other road people that worked with road districts, county. It's, this will be hard to, number one, it'll complicate bidding, it'll increase the cost of bids. To enforce it and implement it will be nearly impossible. And so, I'm real concerned about specifically number eight.
Yeah, and keep in mind too, that these are recommendations that will have to under, that both the city, the town, and the county. Will have to choose whether or not they're going to actually implement. We don't implement any of that, and we're not, we're not mandating to say, and you won't ever hear us say as a commission. Well, you didn't do that, so now you have to. It's all a recommendation as to what we would suggest they do. Ultimately, it's gonna be up to each of those municipalities to decide whether or not they actually want to do this or not. We're not obligated, they're not obligated to follow what we recommend and such.
They were gonna fund the projects too.
Yeah, and they were gonna fund the project, so they're not gonna obviously fund anything that they can't afford to fund and such. So this is not obligating them to do anything beyond that, so.
So these recommendations were, did, did our commission compile these? Were these the outcome of the engineering study? And this was the, the, the engineering firm that basically?
It's a firm, and also taking into account the public engagement efforts, the public comments we see. People are given opportunity to provide comments, and, and then this is the outcome of their recommendations.
Does the steering committee also weigh in?
Yeah, they, yeah, we, we, yeah, with the project steering committee, they have had a monthly meeting, they have like a workshop. So all this is like a, an outcome of all these different efforts and engagement. And so, so like, it's the chairman's called out, and it's really recommendations. It's not like, okay, it's not done, and then government's coming after you, that type of situations. If this, as for planning, sometimes it's, if we don't put it out there, people won't recognize those. But this also may be a goal, and, and where it can be achieved, there's factors that play into it. So it's like, okay, there's a penalty, you cannot do it, that type of thing. Yeah, so it is really guidelines, depending on. Eventually, the elected officials, you know, if they mandate, okay, this has to be done this way, whatever. As with any plans, you know, is, is, is a guide, is a blueprint, and give way to recognize that. This is all good, I, I mean, the objective is good, by safety. How to do it in different ways.
Carl, may I just interrupt here quickly?
Yeah.
Couple of things. The idea here is that the recommended projects will be evaluated up against the programs of the local governments. So things on the county will be considered by the county, and the same thing with Bloomington and Normal. Where we can align with their existing projects, we will. And we're, and we're asking in every project that's pursued here, with whether or not it's currently listed in the plan. That it be, you know, done and designed with safety in mind, so that we are taking every effort to make sure that people aren't dying in our transportation system. The second thing is the existence of the plan, the adoption of the plan, also opens up access to money for implementation coming from the federal level. So should this be adopted, that would give all of the local jurisdictions the option of using that as a lever to get additional funding for projects that would require some safety. Components included.
Yeah, so this could be a basis if adopted. And when we apply for grants, they say, hey, we got a, a doctor plan, and to help us to justify, hey, that's the reason why you're applying for the grants. And so it helps a lot to, lots of other planning efforts, you know, the grant tools, you ask, okay, have you approved certain plans and whatnot?
So working with the committee then, the community constituency. If there's, then I'll pick on Norm. If Norm was gonna, Norm was gonna do a project, they want to do an intersection project. And they are right now, say it's scheduled for eight years from now, which is some six, eight year program. They would then be able to look at this and say, maybe let's realign the scope of the project a little bit to match this program?
Yes.
So for example, extended curbs, pedestrian refuge space, something like that. And then roll that in, make their tip submission, be more congruent with this program, which follows the program. And then also positions it more for maybe some additional federal state funding.
Right, absolutely.
It could, no guarantees.
Well, no. So the city, the, basically the city, the town, the county, or the studies we're watching, put in on this, and then use this to measure the project scope.
Yeah, also their public works entering direct, who's county engineer, they all served on their project steering committee as well, providing.
So I was reading, yeah, just one additional question, because I was reading through, and the common recommendation was the road diet. Is that just where you reduce the number of traffic lanes?
Yes.
Is that the idea?
Yeah.
I assume so, I Googled it, it didn't come up, so.
And that's something that, having been part of several discussions about things like that, that always comes up as a possibility.
Sure does.
Sometimes they implement it, sometimes they don't.
I think the concern I have right now in, in Normal.
Yeah.
Is that there's a proposal for a road diet for college, there's also a proposal for a road diet for Vernon. So that's two major east-west.
Yeah.
Roads, so that, that's gonna impact transportation through the community. So we have to brainstorm for that.
Yeah, in fact, I don't, I don't wanna put TAZA on the spot. Actually, like, some of those projects, they went through public engagement, and then we see public input. There, there was a process even before they decided to go for road diet. I don't know if anything else you want to ask.
Sure, anything about those projects?
Sure, and, you know, I'm not an engineer, so I'm not like following it too closely. But Vernon Avenue did go through a public process, and that involved a steering committee, a couple of different surveys, community engagement. And so the, that study has been completed, and it did go before council. There has not been any, right now, it's just kind of more in an engineering phase. As far as College Avenue goes, as far as, I know there is not an active College Avenue study being done to reduce any lanes. I'm only familiar with the Vernon Avenue one right now. But our engineering department would, you know, know more.
Other questions?
I have just one last one, I'm sorry.
Sure.
What was the public feedback from the rural community with respect to the incorporation of rural, locally also? Did we get feedback from the rural community?
They were advised of the plan, they were encouraged to, to attend those public open houses. But in terms of, of the actual comments, the only key one, more, I don't relate to safety, it's more on, like, when they have the. The township roads, and, and generally, my, the township road, when, when there's certain development that takes place, that the township road. People use the township road to get to the site, but the site is not within certain municipality. And that, there has some concern on the cost and the effect and the impact on the roads, because people have to use the township roads to get to the site. And, but it's, it's, I don't think that was a safety thing, partially it can be a safety thing, but also a cost and maintenance, that type of issue, yeah.
Other questions? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the plan, the resolution.
So.
Thank you, second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same thing.
Aye.
The plan is approved. We're now on to information, items for discussion and information, leading with the housing coordinator position update, Ray?
Yes, thank you. So, ECO has staged a department of economic, commerce and economic opportunity. They have just issued the official notice of safe award. And then staff accepted today, and so we expecting there'll be a grant agreement coming our way for a two-year. Grant performance starting in November. So we're at this point just waiting for some of the paperwork, we put to the state, got their order today, and accepted the notice of approval, which gives you a price.
Regional housing initiatives, do you?
Good afternoon, everyone. I have the regional housing initiatives for updates for the month of November. For local updates, we facilitated the September affordable and supportive housing meeting last week. And in relation to this, we drafted a new white paper called Housing, Population, Socioeconomic Transit in McLean County. So this white paper looked at changes across multiple variables from 2019 to 2023. Variables include total population, households, housing units, median household income, and employment, among other variables. And then so, one key takeaway from this white paper is that the rate of increase in terms of median household income and employment. Outpaced the rate of increase in housing units in the county, and therefore creating a tighter housing market for the county. And other updates, MCRPC signed the program year 2025, CDBG sub-recipient agreement with the city of Bloomington last week. We actually just received the signed, the signed agreement from the city today. And then staff also attended housing coalition meeting last week, where the group discussed updates and an asset mapping of affordable housing providers in the county. Those are the updates that I have, we have any questions?
Questions? Okay, thank you. Ray, our Jen, the human services transportation plan update?
Maybe all four of you use the code in. We've been talking for months now about the fact that we had a meeting coming up in September, it was last week, of the Region Six HSTP. Both the policy committee and the technical committee jointly, as a matter of standard. We got several new county board members from the various counties in Region Six attending, which was a good thing. We are looking to make sure that all of the county boards are represented on the policy committee, preferably by a county board member or their designate. But we so far are getting a good response from county board members. Some of the highlights of the meeting, which was kind of a summation of the projects that we were carrying out, the work that's still to be done. First was a demonstration of an HSTP dashboard on our, about to be on our website, presented by none other than our very own Thomas Valencia, who also created the dashboard and put a lot of work into it. And is continuing to do so, so that went over very well, and people are interested in how it can be. We asked for suggestions on where else should be included, and we will, I think, hear more over the next couple of months about that. We had an extensive discussion with all, with both of the committees and everyone present about how to do public outreach, and specifically to sort of spread the word much more generally across the, not just the targeted populations for this, but the general population in all five counties. And so there were some ideas about that. It did give us an opportunity to remind some of the members and their agencies that we need their help in this process, because we can't go foot the foots in every grocery store in five counties. So we're gonna need some assistance on that, and people understood that. We've had questions for sort of informational material. We have drafted two things, a survey to get additional information from the committee members, and also a kind of short explanation of how HSTP came to be, and what our role has been, and how. Due to transition in providers, which is continuing, I'll get to that in a moment, what kind of new information we might need. So we're gonna get those mailed down and then sent out as soon as possible. We also have reports from the three, as of Monday, current public transit providers for rural areas, or rural counties. From Chris, which is currently serving Ford County, they noted that they had started kind of slow, because they didn't want to overburden their service elsewhere. And they're looking for another driver, which by this time they may have. And they also noted that from Ford County, most medical trips are going into Champaign or Baton Rouge. So it's not like just from proximity, and that's actually true for people in the southeast, or McLean County as well, that can be their, you know, destination of choice. Can Echo, which is now a new service from Canet Transit, also starts slow, this is a new type of service for them. As of the end of July, they were doing about forty trips per week, which is low, that's not the full complement of the usual demand. They are also looking at trips into adjoining counties and figuring out how that might work. And finally, Shovus, which has three counties in Region Six, County Key, where they have a separate agreement. And then Livingston and Iroquois, they provided in the region over the last, in the last few months, by month, about two thousand trips per month. So obviously a much more extensive network, a long-standing one. However, one, one other note that Shovus raised, noting that some of the managed care organizations who are supposed to be providing support in soliciting trips for people in Medicare, for example, or Medicaid. Are leaving the state because they've discovered that, you know, with additional requirements coming from the state, they're not really able to sustain their business. And that is creating some concerns about access to healthcare in terms of how it gets funded. However, we have a new development. As of yesterday, the Livingston County Board made an announcement to the effect that they would be suspending their agreement with Shovus for service in both Livingston and Iroquois counties with immediate effect. And there was a press release issued yesterday. So they are looking for an alternative provider as quickly as possible. It is possible, we've heard that Chris, currently serving Ford County, might also move north into those two, but that's not been announced, so we're waiting to see.
What was the rationale behind them canceling?
The rationale that they stated was that Shovus was not in compliance with certain grant departments that hadn't managed to serve certain tasks or certain requirements. They didn't give any details, and I have not had a chance to talk to the Shovus CEO or a tech about this. And this is quite unexpected. And, you know, this, we were thinking this might happen toward the end of the year, but to have this come up, and with those assertions, I would very much like to see the evidence to, you know, support that, that contention. But in the meantime, we have to figure out how those two counties get served. Shovus continues to be a provider in County Key, so we'll see what happens with that. Any other questions?
Other questions for Jennifer? Thank you. Ray, strategic plan, version two. Actually, Veterans Park. Okay, that's fine.
Yeah. Which is probably projects, the next project steering committee will be held on October tenth. And then the, there will be two public open houses to be held November fourth and fifth, and more details to be announced. And also there will be a business committee meeting with the stakeholder business, you know, business committee on November fourth. The consultant's planning to P C M my alternative, different designs, thought for, you know, for the public, and also for the business committee, who will provide inputs. And so more details to be announced, but it will be November fourth and fifth, we'll give you a price, and you know, and there will be more information on that. And so that, yeah, the project's ongoing.
And then strategic land use?
Anthony's is not feeling well today, so I'm gonna take his place. As we call, we, the staff, we had expanded a public comment period for the first draft of the plan documents. And that public comments period ended September first, taking into consideration of number of comments from the different folks, and also the different. taking into consideration of number of comments from the different folks and also the different groups. We, meeting staff and also lots of, from MCRPC, but from the city, town, and the county, also worked on the second revised draft. And we, you all have been, shared a copy, and also a flyer that indicates there will be two public open houses to come, October fourteenth and sixteenth, with one at the Downs, and then one in the Heartland Community College. And so the public comments for the second round is going to end on October twenty-second. And also we have placed public libraries in our office, hard copies, you know, for public to view and files like that. So we'll give you a price, we'll see how the second round of public comments hopefully, the revised draft, you know, address most, if not all, you know, what makes sense from a planning perspective in the second draft. So we'll keep you posted.
Right.
Yeah.
Were the, were those public meetings moved? Because initially I had written down September twenty-ninth and October first. And, and like, there were gonna be locations at Heartland was one of them. Like, was that changed at some point?
Never. I'm not saying you're wrong, but I, we never pinned down. And you were talking about the, the last week of September and, and first week of October. I don't know if that's what, what Anthony, we just, Anthony, and I look on the dates and the confirmation of the locations, it's like last week. So I, I can't tell you, but I can let you know. I'll, I'll find out if those were the days that we initially look at. Because we, we just issued like two days ago, you know, the revised draft, so.
But then when I went in there to write those down, I noticed I had already written down a couple of meetings. So I just was confused, and so it seems like we're rescheduling and we should.
I don't think we have rescheduled, cause we, we were still, like the Downs, we didn't really confirm until late last week. HCC, it, it was last week, so we did not know if those would be available, even the location, unless the dates were being considered. But we, I don't think that's the case, but I'm not saying you're wrong, you can probably took it down from somewhere. I, I'll check with Anthony. We never publicized those, this really.
Could you make sure that, yeah, we don't have public out there thinking
Yeah.
that this is an important enough item?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That we need to make sure.
Yeah, I mean, I thought on the, so, yeah, yeah, like the county, like, somebody posted it, so.
Wow, yeah, we, we, we checked. Yes, we know that's already faced, we're, we're starting some conversations on the second, on the second, the revised draft already. Now, we also have for the SS4A, as I just said earlier, we have, for the Veterans Park, we have open houses coming up in early November. In those dates and location, we just confirmed also. So, yeah, I, I will check on that, cause we don't want people to, to, to think, hey, there will be, you know, on those days.
And I went back to trying to find the post I could show you, and I couldn't, so.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll check, see if that's anything like you. Yeah, no, thanks for letting us know. Yeah, we, things like that we, we want to know, but sometimes there's information out there.
Right.
Any other questions?
Ray, how would you describe the feedback or input or inquiries on this space?
The, I think.
Volume or frequency or?
Yeah. We had a lot of comments, right? Majority, we received, you know, the different, what we call kind of interaction. We didn't issue like a survey, like, we just had the plan out and asked for comments. And so it wasn't like a committee-wide issue, what, what you want, what you don't like to see. So we received about seventy, eighty comments, interactions. And that's what came in, you know, through the written comments forms. And also when we went out to those five public meetings, we went to some special stakeholder group meetings. All those were, were considered. The major issues, one was the Eastside Highway. A lot of people didn't think it should be on there. And then the, the second issue, a more, more popular, quote-unquote, issue was in the southeastern part of Bloomington, where there was a large chunk of land that was shown as to be industrial. And, and that got people alarmed. And what it was, this, and I, and I don't know if Anthony mentioned it in the last meeting, uh, in September. Because the way that each parcels were drawn, it's bi-parcel. So even though it wasn't anticipated, the industrial development to be like, say, this large, but then just because the parcel is this large, so when, when those parcels were colored, then it shows up as huge and, and caused, caused the concern. So we will see on the revised plan, it will be scaled down. You'll infer the consideration and working with staff from city, town, and county. So that's been revealed, so that there won't be such a misconception. There's probably like thousands of acres or hundreds of acres of development. It's just because the way those parcels are, you know, the some people have much parcel in, in color. So I think those are the, were the two more major issues. There were other things, like the Bivian Motorway, there's some people are concerned, but I think people do recognize the, the traffic and things like that. And also some of the roads that were, were shown, and people were concerned about where it goes, that kind of thing. On the Eastside Highway, you'll see, or you might have read the revised draft already. So after further discussion with our partners, instead of showing the entire roadway, more the north-east terminus and the south-east terminus of the, of the, the, the roadway, then it'll be, the road is the longest shown, but then the terminus are connected through the existing to Wanderlines. And so it's, the further the circumfence of what we call circumfence of our way, it's the longer shown on that strategic land use plan. And so it substantially scaled down. Now, as we recall, we're not expecting, Eastside Highway has been happened. It's just been always in, in the books and hasn't been called for removal by either the feds. And, and that's why they were shown initially. And it was based on explosive population growth, which we don't anticipate in the near future. So, so the revised plan, you know, so it's that scaled down. So we'll see how people, if that's still find that acceptable.
So Ray, are they protecting any of that area?
Right now it's not, yeah, not the Eastside Highway, it's not protected. Yeah, and I, a few months ago, we talked with the county engineer and stuff.
So if anybody wants to build something in that area, they go into.
Yeah, 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 so, yes.
Yeah, and that just guarantees that what is currently farmland will stay farmland.
That's what's being proposed, yes, yes, for the future land.
Okay.
And also, we want people to realize there's a difference between the land use plan and the zoning plan, or zoning. Cause the zoning has the, the zoning power, the regulations, and the law that governs the, the use. The use is, the, the land use plan is a guide. It's up to the individual elected bodies, you know, the city council, town council, county board to decide, hey, if there's a patient comes in, then they have to look at it on a case-by-case basis. But the plan shows us it's a guide.
Any other questions for Ray? Is there anything else that needs to come before the committee? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Stand or adjourn? Thank you. Also, just to remind people, this was a special meeting for the October, so we will not be meeting in October. Our next meeting will be in November, okay?